Hey everybody. Um, whoever's watching, I'm assuming nobody's watching, but that's a whole other issue. Um, I'm on my way, just getting on the off-ramp, leaving Jellico. Headed toward um Rocky Top for my city council meeting tonight. Uh, it will be my final city council meeting for Rocky Top. Um, because I'm moving from there and you need to live in the city, obviously. Um, if you want to serve on city council. Um, so it's been a... I'm, I've been very proud of my time serving on city council in Rocky Top. And it's bittersweet to actually be stepping down. Um. We've gotten some things gone, um, done, including getting the cemetery cleaned up, getting some areas ready to be classified as park area. Um, and I'm hoping that, you know, we've all, we've also got some things done. Like we have a splash pad there now. We've got fencing around the ballpark um and around the splash pad. And, you know, we've been making steps to improve the infrastructure. Um. And it's, it's been a good thing. I mean, I've been glad to be there. I've only been on the city council for a year. And unfortunately with some of my health problems and some of the stuff going on with my family, we needed to move from Rocky Top to Jellico and I don't regret that decision at all. Car just pulled in front of me. Um, and it's something that, um, I, I really love the city of Jellico. Um, I would like to do more with Jellico and actually for the past couple of years, we've set up some groups to do things around Jellico to make it better. So I feel like maybe it's that natural time in my life where I finished what I started in Rocky Top and now it's time for me to move on and, and do something else. I hope I get a chance to do that. Um, sorry about the bounciness. Uh, anyway, so I'm on my way there for that and um, what else about? We're supposed to have a chamber of commerce meeting at 5:30 and then the city council meeting at 6 o'clock, which usually runs about 30 minutes. Um, shouldn't be too long. Um, this is a beautiful drive and I've been doing it back and forth from Rocky Top to Jellico where I teach for three years. And now that we're actually living in the same city that I work in, I think um, it's gonna be even better. So I do miss the drive and I'm gonna miss it in winter when the sides of the road where the rock is, the exposed rock gets covered in icicles and it's beautiful. Um, but now it's just starting fall. You can start to see the leaves are changing and um, this is gonna be a beautiful time as well. So anytime I get a chance to go this way, I tend to try to take it. But um. Sorry about the ums also. I actually was editing a video for my 3D printing club and I decided, oh, I'm just gonna go ahead and take out all the ums. And so I went through and deleted tons of them. So now my video is, looks like a lot of clips just stuck together, but that's okay. It just drove me crazy. What can I say? I work at Jellico High School. And when I first got the job at Jellico, I really told myself, this is gonna be the job I'm gonna have until I find something better. And I applied for a bunch of jobs and um, you know, just thinking I'm gonna find the perfect job for me. And the more I've done the job at Jellico, the more I've come to love what I do. And will I do it forever? I don't know. I don't know how long I even have left, you know, nobody does. Um, but I've really come to like the kids. I, you know, there, there are things I feel like I can fix and I'm not saying that Jellico's broken or anything, but there are things that I feel like an outside influence is actually a good thing. Um, so I work at Jellico. This year I'm teaching US history, world history, economics and computers. We're on a block schedule, meaning that um, three of my four blocks are about an hour and 35 minutes long. Um, and one of them is about 40 minutes long, I would guess. That's the economics class. And so it's always different and one of the things I love about teaching is that the schedule is almost always different. Um, you also don't know what's coming. Somebody may be having a really bad day or somebody may be having a birthday or somebody, you know, may just wanna talk about something that's going on in the news. And we have been doing a lot of that stuff about stuff in the news. Um, you know, we elected Donald Trump as president and, you know, we're, you know, having issues with North Korea and there's the Iran deal that's back and forth. And these are things that I talk about with, you know, my history classes. Um, and so it's been actually fun. We got to go through the election cycle and, you know, it's, when I first started years ago at Yukaya High School, I was teaching the year that 9/11 happened, the World Trade Center and, you know, things like that. And um, so you get a chance to show the kids news. You know, when, when we were teaching about the Gulf War, um, I found live streams. And this is back before live streams were normal. Um, I found the live stream addresses where they were being fed from, you know, Iraq into the main news stations. And so I was showing them live news before it was edited. And that was a, an amazing thing to be able to do. Anyway, that's off on a whole different tangent. Um, I've been given a chance to teach computers this year, which is exciting for me because this school has really only ever had computers as typing. And so now I'm showing them some different kinds of things. We did SculpRus, which is a 3D virtual sculpting software. Um, we've done a home design program um, called Sweet Home 3D and some of the students really got into that. Couple of them really got into SculpRus and getting ready to start things like Photoshop and Brice and those kinds of programs. And what I like about doing a class this, like this, is it's a lot like a sampler, meaning that a student will come in and try a different kind of software and some people will love it and some people will hate it and some people have a natural ability toward it and some people just can't grasp it, but that's all okay, right? It's like a chance for them to find something that they love or just something that they're good at or whatever. And they might be good at one thing and not good at another. Just because someone is good at Photoshop, for example, does not mean they're gonna be good at 3D and vice versa. Um, anyway, so I'm, I'm glad to be able to have that opportunity. And I think that the students I have this year, for them, they came in just expecting to hang out in the computer lab and not really do much. And I'm hoping that as we do more interesting things, that the students are gonna be able to showcase um, what they can do. And I think other students will begin to look at it and go, wow, this is pretty cool. You know, I didn't even know you could do this kinda stuff. Um, what else? I like my world history class because it doesn't have an EOC or end of course exam. So even though I cover the standards, we don't have to focus so heavy on making students memorize the standards. Um, and what I like about that is if the kids are really interested in something, like when we get to talk about World War I, which is, there's just a few standards in Tennessee world history for World War I, they might really get into something like All Quiet on the Western Front. And since we normally don't have time to read a book, I might assign them the book, All Quiet on the Western Front. And we read the book and we talk about it and imagery and, you know, describe, you know, the smells and the sounds and the sights and things like that. And it really gets them into it. And then what we'll do is we'll watch the movie, the 1970s movie, so it doesn't have a lot of, you know, it doesn't have any vulgarity or anything in it. Um, but anyway, it's a, a really interesting thing. So sometimes students will get into that. Sometimes they really don't care about that. So we moved on and uh, jump in. Maybe we spend more time with World War II or into Korea. So we can discuss how Kim Jong-un came to his power, you know, through his grandfather, then his father, and then himself. And by the time you watch this, probably Kim Jong-un won't be there anymore, but you never know. Alright, sorry, there's a truck getting ready to pull into my lane. Um, so. What was I saying? Oh yeah, school. Uh, I enjoy things about teaching. Uh, it's the, it's a job where it doesn't sound like it, but you wake up in the morning and you don't say, oh my gosh, I don't wanna go to work today. I wake up in the morning wondering what today's gonna bring. And I guess that's probably why a lot of people teach. I don't do it so that I can be over anybody and you'll run into teachers like that where you can tell that they're there so that they can be the boss. Uh, you'll see other people that they're there to show people how great they are. Uh, some people are doing it because they are super passionate about one thing, like history or government or whatever. Uh, me, I'm, the, the learning subject stuff is secondary for me. Uh, to me, it's showing the students that teachers care and that they matter and that their life has purpose. And if they learn history or economics or computers or something along the way, then that's extra as far as I'm concerned. So, other than that, um, I was teaching computer classes for Mendocino College and I guess I probably got a little outspoken about the cost of libraries, uh, not libraries, uh, bookstores. And so I switched from there to my, not having a book for my classes. I, I gave them online information in curriculum. And then I was critical about my dean, um, which, you know, not the smartest move. And critical about some of the hiring that they had done. And the next thing I knew, I got a letter saying that I was not going to be teaching the class next semester because they had found somebody equally qualified. And I fought it and actually filed a, a complaint, uh, which went before the board and so on. But they ended up dropping it because there wasn't enough evidence that the person replacing me was not equally qualified. Even though she'd only taught the class a couple of times and I had taught it 26 times, plus the concurrent years of teaching it in high school uh, levels. So that's, that's, you know, okay with me. It's actually turned out to be a blessing. That's one of the things that prompted us to move from Rocky Top to Jellico because we weren't gonna be able to afford the large house payment anymore. So we downsized or thought we were going to downsize and um. Let's see, so we ended up going to Jellico. The, we're still trying to sell our house. So the people that were supposed to go sign the papers this week, apparently just stopped communicating with their realtor and they haven't been answering us. So I'm assuming that they're out of, are not interested anymore. So it may go back up on the market and we may end up stuck and have to just rent the place out. And if that happens, I'm not sure the house that we're living in, whether we're gonna be able to keep it or not. The lady would like to sell it to us within a year. Um, so I'm not sure if this is gonna work the way we want it to or not. Um, anyway, so I'm gonna hopefully get involved in stuff, as I said, up in Jellico and, and I don't know. People keep asking me if I'm gonna run for city council in Jellico and I just don't know if I have that in me. I, I feel like once you're in city council, you have less power. At least that's been my experience in Rocky Top. Too many things that I've tried to get done, I'm not allowed to do or talk about or go places. I can't go into a building to help them fix or paint or anything because I'm a government employee now. Um, even though I get $50 a month, $46 or something after taxes for that responsibility. But I feel like I had more power before I was on city council. So we'll have to see how things go. Uh, the other thing is I'm doing a lot of reviewing of 3D printers and such. And um, with 3D Printing Club or 3DPC.Tech, which is our website. And that's been kinda fun, but also frustrating because 3D printing technology is relatively new. It's really kinda been in the mainstream for the last five years or so. And it's, there's so many different companies coming out with printers and stuff that uh, we are doing reviews of those printers to try to tell people what's good and bad. And the problem is, there's a fine line between being critical in a review and telling people, don't buy this printer. Because if somebody sends you a printer for free for testing purposes and stuff, you don't wanna just trash it. Uh, but you wanna be honest. So the people that are wanting me to review things honestly, um, and not say anything negative about the printer are really not liking some of my reviews. Because I'm honest. I, it's one of the things I do to a fault. And I probably should smooth things over a little bit more. But if something has got a really bad interface or something has a, you know, in my case, or my belief, something is done wrong, I will say that. And I'm not trying to tell people that I'm the only right answer or anything. It's just that I feel like my job as a reviewer is to be honest. And these printer companies, if they don't get an honest review, will not um, will never fix anything that could be fixed or make things better. Alright, um, I know this is long and rambling, but I just, as I mentioned before, um, I've do this, I'm doing these videos, series of just personal videos, me talking, because I don't know how much time I've got, you know? It's like with my neuropathy in my hands and my feet, I've questioned, you know, what happens if my neuropathy goes to my heart or my kidneys or something like that? I have no idea how all of that works. So does neuropathy cause heart attacks or, you know? And so I, I'm basically trying to set these things up so that if people ever do wanna hear, whoa, if people ever do wanna hear what I talked like, what I was about, um, you know, they could just watch stuff like this. Mostly I think about Maya because she's only five and, you know, my other kids all know me. And I know that there's gonna be a day when I'm gone and they will forget a lot of the things about me and that's okay too. You know, life goes on and I know that life on this planet, our time is so temporary. It's such a fleeting moment in the big picture of the world that we just don't know what we've got. And I have to say, I appreciate the hell out of my life. I am so blessed. When I was 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, um, I looked ahead at life and to me, it was doom and gloom. It was, life is not gonna get better. Um, it was a dark tunnel, really. And whenever I did think I saw light at the end of the tunnel, it was a train. And I was out at my friend Bill's, uh, Bill Hagenbart and his grandmother was out there. I think her name was Arliss, if I remember correctly. She was German and she had a real strong German accent. And so she was talking to me and she walked outside and saw me walking over into the field and she asked me what was wrong. She was just out there in a, like a travel trailer on their property because they came to visit for a few days. I had only met her a couple of times and she and I just clicked and I really cared a lot about that lady. But we started to talk and she picked up on things so fast. She could tell that I felt lonely, even though I was surrounded by people and friends. She knew that um, I was worried about my future and that I was thinking about not having somebody. And when she started bringing those things up, I just opened up and started to talk to her. And it was pretty amazing because all of a sudden, I was telling her that I felt like I was gonna be alone my entire life and that I was never gonna have children. And I wanted children, you know, I wanted four kids and a wife that I could come home and laugh with and talk to. And I just knew that because of my weight and because of all this other stuff, that I was going to be by myself. And so she started to talk to me and told me that that's not the way it was gonna be, that I didn't understand because I was so young. And I thought, I'm not young. I'm an adult now. I'm 18 years old and, you know. She was so right. And I wish I could go back and tell her thank you because that to me changed the focus of my life. And, and I mentioned Mr. Gibson had done that for me in eighth grade, my second year of eighth grade. But this was something that I left high school, I was ready to really get going in my life, that I assumed was gonna be darkness. And she showed me hope, even if it was just a little grain of hope. Um, and then when I did get my wife, who was my best friend, um, and four amazing kids, and then we got Maya, it was like my life was better than I had ever hoped. Um, I, I just can't even begin to tell you how amazing and how thankful I am for my life. I thought I was a failure. I thought my dad abandoned us, my mom's doing nothing but working because she has to to support us. I felt like a burden. And here I am, not expecting to be anything to anybody and to end up having five amazing kids and a wife, as I said, that's my total best friend. And to also be a school teacher where I've been able to make a difference in kids' lives. You know, and, and I know I don't make a difference in every kid's life, but for those who have contacted me 15 or 20 years after I was their teacher and told me that I made a difference in their life, that is something that you can't buy, you know? That's like my life has been amazing and I wish I could take this video back and show myself 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, to say, you know what, you're going to make a difference. Even if it's little pieces here and there, you know, I'm never gonna be a professional athlete. I'm never gonna be president or governor or a movie star or anything like that. But I made a difference in the life of some kids and that is amazing. And you know what else is amazing is the number of those kids that have made a difference for me. Those kids, my students over the years, not just my own kids, have made such an impact and taught me who I am and who I could be. And they were there for me when I was hospitalized years ago. And, you know, I, I just, I consider some of those, those kids my best friends in life. It's been amazing and I, I can't even begin to thank everybody or to be humbled enough to have kids tell me that they're here because of me. Dang it. Um, that's that subject that I started to cry with Mr. Gibson. I'm not gonna do that right now. I'm driving. So. I am blessed and my kids, I'm gonna try to do videos for every kid. But my first born, Bobby, my second, Megan, they were the twins, born an hour apart. Uh, Bobby was 6'8", 6 pounds, 8 ounces and Megan was 6 pounds, 2 ounces. And we'll talk about that pregnancy in another video too. Um, then David, he came, well, first with, with Megan and Bobby, we were getting ready to go see the Oakland Raiders and they were sending autographs at Walmart. And I grabbed my helmet and my jacket and all these other things that I had been having autographed by Raiders because I was gonna get these autographs and my wife called me from the bathroom on getting ready to walk out the front door and her waterhead broke. And so we went to the hospital and um, to labor and that was a rough night. But I'll do a, a video just about talking about that issue. But um, we welcomed those little kids into our life and they have been amazing. Um, at different points in my life, different ones of them become my confidant, confidant, um, my friend and they've been there for me and I've been there for them. And, you know, sometimes we hurt each other and sometimes we heal each other. And that's what family does. Um, hopefully you can do less hurting and more helping, more healing. Um, but then later, uh, they, they were born in 1994, May 15th, 1994. David was born December 31st, 2000. I'm sorry, December 31st, 1996. And yes, and um, so he is now 20 and he'll be 21 this December 31st. And so that night was a huge rainstorm. It was flooding and we were living in Santa Rosa, California. And got him through floodwater, uh, got my wife through floodwater over to the hospital where she had him. And Barbara was there and, you know, we had some family there. My mom was trying to get through, but it rained so much that she had to go the long way around to get to Santa Rosa. It's normally an hour and she spent several hours on the road to get there. And we had David and um, that night, we were sitting in the, the bedroom, Becky and I, um, waiting for David and all of a sudden, there's fireworks. And we look out the window and our window is just facing this beautiful fireworks display. And we realized that it was they were doing fireworks for New Year's Eve. And so anyway, that was a special night also. And then in December 29th, 2000, we welcomed Emily into the family. And so Megan and Bobby had been a natural birth. Becky didn't even have medication, although she asked for it at the very end. Um, they said it's too late for the medication now. You're gonna have these babies. And so that was her natural. And then the next one was David and he was with a spinal. And so she experienced that natural single birth with a spinal. Um, she still says that's the way to go. And then with Emily, they took her cesarean section because they were expecting her to be a really, really big baby. And she was a big baby, I think, nine pounds, something like that. But they expected her to be really big. So anyway, they did that one. I almost didn't get to go in, but I'm thankful for Barbara, um, my mother-in-law, that she fought the nurse and they ended up putting two shirts on me and one pair of pants on each leg um, so that I could be in there for Emily to be born. And um, that was interesting. And then when we got Maya, literally went to pick her up from the hospital, brought her home and we knew immediately that she was special for our family. And she was our kid. Nothing, there was never a question. Not one moment in our life have we ever questioned that decision. And she has been the pride of our entire family. She has been there for all of us. She saved our family. The stuff that we were going through for a few years, Maya always made it better. Always made us have something to live for. Um, and we went through a lot of things there for the last few years. It's been rough, but again, even after all of that, I'm thankful to have my life. Um, we've lived in a lot of houses and I'm hoping to do a little video about each and every house. But, you know, I don't often have time to sit and talk, which is why I decided, hey, I gotta be in a car for a half hour. Maybe I can talk for a few minutes and tell people who I am and what I'm doing. So I turned the camera on when I was leaving Jellico and it's apparently still recording, I hope, um, as we get to Rocky Top. And I should be there in just a few minutes. My first meeting isn't for 19 minutes. So I have a few minutes to kill. But anyway, um, I hope that whoever someday watches these videos, that you find it even the least little bit interesting or maybe if it's my family watching it to see who I was or whatever, that you'll know that I absolutely love my family more than life itself. Um, it's, you are everything to me. And I, I have, hopefully someday I'll get a chance to meet my grandchildren. If I don't, then I'm hoping that they will be able to see this too. Um, there are gonna be situations and I'll talk about this with each of my kids. But there are gonna be things that people will think, oh, I wish I had never said this to him or I wish I had never done this or I wish this, whatever. I don't think about any of that stuff. If you are worried that there's something that you hurt me or something that makes me think you don't love me or something, don't worry about that. I love all of you guys. I know you love me. Um, I know that there are things that we would have all... I love all of you guys. I know you love me. Um, I know that there are things that we would have all done differently if we could. So don't ever hold something against yourself, alright? Nothing, I can't think of one thing. If I think, oh my gosh, I wish that so-and-so had never done this, I can't think of one thing. So if I can't think of anything, clearly it's not that big of a deal to me, alright? So I'm just proud to have all of you guys as my family and my friends. And, um, I look forward to spending as much time the rest of my life with you as I possibly can. Looks like they're starting to fix up some of the buildings in Rocky Top. That's a good thing. That's awesome. I'm proud. Looks like they're even dressing up some of the windows. I hope that continues. Anyway, I gotta go up here and turn around and I will be back with another video. I don't know when, but since you're not watching these live, you're watching them whenever you can. Um, probably. So, oh my gosh, I don't know what I'm even saying. Anyway, I've gone long enough and taped long enough. So thank you for being with me this long. I love you guys. I'm not sure how this is gonna work. I figured I'd give it a shot, driving back from Rocky Top to Jellicoe. And I think I am gonna keep losing focus. Um, the camera will keep losing focus on me, I should say, because it's so dark. But I figured I would try it. Um, it is seven ten PM. I finished my final Rocky Top city council meeting. I'm still on the downtown growth committee meeting because I still wanna make that city better. Um, and I know I can help. We talked about doing the park and stuff tonight and we did some other, you know, things. But anyway, I'm glad to have that behind me and I can move forward now. If we could just sell that house and move forward, uh, I would feel a lot better. Um, so what should I talk about? Gonna be hard to drive and focus on talking, so I'm not sure this is gonna work, but I figured I would try. Um, some of the things I've done over the years and, you know, this whole video thing that I'm doing, um, I enjoy learning new things, um, learning how to do something and I kind of always have. Uh, I remember one of the greatest things I ever did in school was in kindergarten. You know, we learned to dip, uh, candles. And that's a weird thing to have these kindergarteners walking up to a, a kettle of like hot wax, dipping, um, wigs into it. And, you know, but I enjoyed that so much. And I, I learned how to make some pottery in kindergarten. Um, those kinds of things really fueled me for the rest of my life. Um, and to this day, I think about these things that my teacher, Mrs. Hibbsman, did for me. And it made me kind of love learning. And I think that's another reason that I really want to, um, show my students that, a love of learning beyond something simple, like, you know, just, um, just learning material. I want them to learn to like learning or love learning even. So that continued through the years where I first was introduced to home computers, which was something that really didn't exist when I was younger. But my stepdad, um, worked at juvenile hall teaching. He was at West Hills High School. And, um, it was only the inmates that went there. Anyway, they started to get these computer things in and they were, I believe it was Atari four hundred and Atari eight hundred. They might've started off with the four hundreds. And since they didn't know how to use them, Tom brought home a Atari four hundred and set it up. And it came with some game cartridges and stuff, but what I immediately got into was programming. And I loved the idea of programming those things. Getting some messages, but I think it's my three D group. Anyway, um, I love the idea of programming. So back then, there were really no colors. Even the games in the arcades were black and white. We had games like Missile Command and Asteroids and Outlaw. And these, these things where everything was just blocks and they were black, or black screens with white blocks. Um, and then later when games started having colors, they came out with four colors. And then it was sixteen colors. And then it was thirty-two colors. And then it was sixty-four and so on. And, um, so I was able to start programming when it was just black and white, using even text symbols. And as I think I mentioned in another video, I did a project for my eighth grade teacher, Mrs. Mayfield. I think I said Merrifield in my last video, but that was a friend of mine in high school. Um, anyway, her name was Mrs. Mayfield and I made a heart diagram just using, um, ASCII characters. A S C I I is ASCII. And, um, I went on from there and I learned how to do blocks. So, you know, back when I was still doing ASCII, I made an ET. And it was his face and it said ET phoning home and you could hear a ring. And I made the ring myself with programming. There wasn't all these samples and stuff like you can get today. Um, and anyway, I started doing, learning how to do blocks. And so my first game that I ever programmed was a, um, horse racing game. And I would draw the three horses and you had to bet on one of the horses, however much, you know, if you had five hundred dollars or something, you could bet fifty dollars on a horse. And if they won first place, you would get a certain prize. In second place, another prize. In third place, something small, right? And so I have no idea, or had no idea, I should say, how horse racing worked or anything like that. Um, so I basically just did that. But what I did was I would have a random number draw and they would move forward that many spaces. So each horse would draw their number and then would redraw the screen. So the horses got closer and closer to the finish line. And then the first horse to hit the finish line would get first place. And that's when we would decide how many, um, dollars somebody got back. And it would have their odds and everything up there. Um, my second game that I programmed was a slot machine. And again, I had no idea about statistical probabilities or anything like that. So I just had it randomly generate, you know, a plum or a lemon or an orange or cherry or something like that. And then if it was three of something, you would get this much money. If it was three of another thing, you'd get this much money and so on. Um, and so I learned a lot and that was just on my own. Kind of, at that time, that was my first year of eighth grade, I believe, is when I first started. And I really couldn't care less about anything else. That was kind of my, my anchor. And so I just did that and I learned to love learning again. And maybe that's what kind of prepared me for my second year of eighth grade with Mr. Gibson. Anyway, um, so I, I continued on that way and later on, you know, I got into art class and so I did drawing. And then I got into pottery class and sculpture and, you know, then I got into carving wood. And then I got into, um, more like webpage design and graphic design and three D graphics and so on. And it's just basically, I just keep moving from one to the other, not because I don't like what I'm doing, but because there's always something cool that comes out. And I think that's the three D modeling thing now with three D printing and everything kind of on the rise. Um, although I almost feel like I've done enough of that and I want, wanna jump into something else, you know? Like I've always wanted to do robotics or, um, boy, just so many different kinds of things. I would like to get back into painting and sculpture and pottery. And I just wanna do all of it. And there's so many people that I, I know they're not wasting their lives, but I look at the things that people can do and I just wonder, why aren't people learning stuff? You know, if, I watch these vampire movies and a lot of people think they would like to live forever because they can do all these, you know, crazy things. And I just wanna live forever so I can learn, you know, every language and, you know, read every book and play every game and, you know, check out every new craft or whatever. I don't ever intend to be one of the greats, um, but I like learning about it. So I'm sorry, this is a big black video and you don't get to see really anything. Um, this is, this is just me. I'm weird. When I decide to do something, I don't care whether people can see it or not. Oh, man. I've written so many computer programs and such that I get done and it works great. And then I'm like, alright, next. And then I just kinda toss it and nobody ever sees. Anyway, um, so I guess that goes back to the last video and why I enjoy teaching the computer class is it gives me a chance to use some of my creativity to expand what I know how to do and, and to try to inspire kids to find something that they want to use their creativity on. And you have to be a weird person like me to really like decide, I want to spend a thousand hours learning how to do this and then just move on and do something different when I'm done. But I just enjoy that. Um, let's see. I also enjoy trying different things to help students learn differently. And, and it's also been one of my great frustrations because when you're teaching, for example, I teach history, a bunch of people hate the books. A bunch of people hate documentaries. A bunch of people hate reading fiction. So you can't pick one thing and satisfy everybody or inspire everybody. And sometimes you feel like you don't inspire anybody. But I'm always trying to find that balance, you know, what is gonna work the best? And as I said earlier, I end up realizing that the material is secondary. And it's not that, you know, I don't want to teach students the material or to learn the details, the facts about different historical events. But what I've discovered, in history especially, really, computers as well, um, is that there is no, I don't wanna say truth, there is no correct way to interpret a historical event. Alright, that's one thing I want my students to get, is that if you're looking at something, even something as big as nine eleven, there's a thousand different ways to look at that. There are conspiracy theories, there are racial theories, there are, you know, a bunch of different things that people say happened. And depending on who you listen to, you get a different history. And so, which is also why in my history class, it's high school history, I read them the true story of the three little pigs from the perspective of the wolf. Alright? And so that right there is unusual. And Mr. Goodwin did not like that I did that to my eighth graders a few years ago when I was reading that to them because he thought it was childish. But what it does is it tells them this familiar story that they've heard a thousand times. And suddenly it's a different story because the wolf's explaining why he went to people's, these pigs' houses, you know, looking for a cup of sugar or something. And when he sneezed, the house fell down and the pig was dead. And so he's a wolf, so do you just leave a pig to rot or do you eat it kind of thing? Anyway, the whole idea is that depending on your view, depends on what happened in history. So I bring that up when we're looking at things like World War One. So those people who've checked out of this video by now, you can't see me and I'm talking about history. Anyway. So in World War One, when we're doing All Quiet on the Western Front, there's a, um, we're, we're going through all the stuff and spoiler alert, the character dies in the end. Um, the main character, Paul Bauman, Baumer. And so these guys are like, oh, man, I can't believe they did that. And, you know, and then we get to the point where we talk about it and I explain, okay, the guys that you were rooting for were the Germans. And the ones they were fighting against were the Americans and the French. Now, are you patriotic? Do you hate America or do you just, did you think of it differently? And I'm, I try to use those kinds of things so that when they look at history, um, they will think of it a little bit different. Alright? Now, I am super patriotic, probably too patriotic for what I know about history and American history. And so students know that about me. And so when they start seeing me say, why are you guys, you know, pro-America when we were really in the wrong in this situation or in this situation, it kind of messes with them enough to, I hope, make them wonder what I'm doing. Alright, so anyway, boy, this is a random video. So I am pulling back into Jellicoe, my home now. Um, I love it here. And look, there's even light on my face now that I'm in my hometown. I'm so stupid. Uh, anyway, so what else? Um, other things that I enjoy is watching random documentaries, especially if I know nothing about the subject. Um, I'll turn on a Ancient Aliens show or I'll watch a documentary about mining gold in Alaska or deep sea diving or whatever. Um, and I just really enjoy learning stuff like that. Alright? Um, the other thing that I do is I also like science fiction and I'm a sucker for time travel movies. And so I've always got these ideas that, you know, someday they're gonna invent time travel and I'm gonna go back and tell my past self. But of course, you know, I don't because I would know that already, unless it's still coming. Um, but I just have this, this idea that, you know, time travel will someday be possible. Now, I told you this is a random video. Um, one thing about time travel that I find fascinating is they've got all these movies where someone starts to step backwards in time and they can watch the scene around them change. But you've got to account for the position of the planet, the rotation of the planet, where our galaxy is inside the universe, the universe's expansion, et cetera. And so like, if I was to go five minutes backward in time, I might be inside the planet or a thousand feet off the planet or something, depending on where I'm standing and, you know, the speed that everything is moving. So in order for something to be time-travelable, make up my own words now, um, somebody would have to have some sort of a spaceship to do it in. Alright? Anyway, that was a random tangent. I should've called this channel Random Tangents. Actually, it's Random Memories or Some Random Memories or something like that, so I guess it still fits. Uh, anyway, I'm stupid. I'm gonna be pulling into my driveway and going into my house, so I'm gonna have to stop. But I hope any of this is interesting to somebody somewhere someday. Alright, thank you for paying attention this far. If I can get into my driveway. It's dark and my headlights stink on this van. Alright, I'll see you next video.